Okay. Now we're good.
Yep, there we go.
All right, we're, okay, so it's seven o'clock and we're gonna bring the public hearing regarding the cable franchise agreement. What are, we're going to let either the town clerk or the town administrator read it into the record. I don't know whose voice is working better right now.
How you feeling, John? I can do it if you. So we have ordinance twenty twenty-two oh nine cable franchise agreement. This is in ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro granting a renewal of the cable franchise to Comcast of Maryland LLC and authorizing a franchise agreement and generally relating to cable television. And so pretty much we've talked about this past couple of weeks. It's a joint hearing or a joint negotiation between Prince George County and the twenty-seven municipalities and all the attorneys. And so pretty much we've secured the same franchise agreements before. It's now going to be in place for about ten to fifteen more years and or a couple of years from down the road up to worry about renewing. And after this is passed, we'll be able to get a Comcast cable access channel.
Commissioners, are there any questions? All right, we only have one member of the public. Linda, raise your hand if you'd like to speak. I don't know if you're able to or not. Okay. Okay, so no public comment, no commissioner comment. So at this time, we will close the public hearing on this matter.
We have to wait till seven-ten.
Yes, we're missing a commissioner too, so I'm gonna hop up and get my phone, which I didn't bring to the desk with me and see if I can locate them.
Okay, great.
All right. We're gonna give her till seven-ten anyway, and then we'll get started on our agenda. All right, guys, I have seven-ten and I have not heard back from Commissioner Lot. We've got three of us on camera, at least. Four of us, okay, we got all of us on camera. So let's move forward with the agenda. I'm gonna call this meeting to order.
Point of order.
Sorry.
We have to close the public hearing and we have to vote to close it.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Don't move. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll call the vote. President Franklin.
Here, here, I.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot. Very well, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So now at seven-ten, we will call this meeting to order. John, can you roll call for us?
Yes, we have President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Duckett.
Here.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Here.
Commissioner Lot. Town administrator Carl Snyder.
Here.
Police chief David Burse.
Here.
Public Works director Darnell Bond.
Here.
John Hodson, town clerk here.
Thank you. I'll now stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We'll review the agenda now. I'll just read through it to save voices. We have our regular consent agenda. We have our regular reports and for business on our business agenda, we have ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash oh eight to amend twenty-nineteen oh two town committees board vote, ordinance twenty-twenty-two oh nine Comcast cable franchise agreement board vote. Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash thirty police license plate reader board vote. Police Department employment agreements board vote. FY twenty-twenty-two audit approval board vote. Then we'll have administrative updates, public comment, preliminary approval of the next agenda and adjournment. Are there any changes, modifications, additions to the agenda at this time? Hearing none, we'll get right into it. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
I'll call the vote. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into the committee reports. I know that not all the committees necessarily have been meeting with the holidays, but we'll run through them. Commissioner Duckett, did the Arts Council, have they been meeting?
No, they have not. There has been a pause until next year, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. Chief Burse, do you have a report from the CIRK team? Sorry, repeat it.
Basically, for the month of November, the CIRK had a total of five hundred and ninety-two volunteer hours and meetings and stuff, so the total was five hundred and ninety-two for the month.
That's good. Right. Kyle, do you have an events committee report, maybe?
Successful Christmas Town event, I understand. I was not able to attend, but it looked like it was a great time. And then we're just looking to plan for Marlboro Day, get things moving. That's our next big event. And also, we brought on a new part-time events coordinator, Lisa. So she's actively working on that Marlboro Day stuff, getting off the ground, getting some sponsorships and getting the agenda and stuff together for the next meeting of the Events Committee, which will be on Thursday, the fifth of January, at seven P M. Virtually.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanchet, do you have a green team?
Yeah, so all I have right now is they're doing a seed packing day, next third day at nine A M, and then another at four P M. I just, I haven't gone through, seen all my emails yet. I, I know I'm missing one. Is that this coming third day or the following? Do you know, Sam?
Seed packing?
Yeah.
Next, it's next Thursday, yes.
The twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth, okay, yep, so that'll be the twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
At nine A M and four P M, and the location.
Town Hall, sorry.
Town Hall, yeah, no problem.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Greenwell. Do you want to take that?
Sure, yeah. So just the board had a meeting with the state delegation that was real productive, so working on a couple of the items that came out of that, getting ready for session. And also gearing up and getting ready for the county budget planning session as well. As well as some other small things here and there.
Thank you. Historic Committee is still on pause while we work out their membership. Sustainable Communities.
I can give, I can give you a. Linda, Linda mentioned she's having some technical issues with her mic. So we, we met last, I believe it was last Monday, had a fruitful discussion. It was myself, Kyle, Commissioner Duckett, along with current chair Linda Pinoyer, former chair Evelyn Stevens and committee member Pat Ben, walking through, we got a good, you know, a good walk through, a good history of sustainable communities, you know, the viewpoints of its purpose and how, you know, how to move forward with it. We walked through some of the memos that we had had in previous meetings and came up with a plan to adjust those based on the input that we received and kind of put that on the agenda for hopefully to bring it up for a discussion and vote in February. So Kyle and I are working through making those edits to the draft and we'll hope to have that back soon.
Thank you. All right, we will move into Commissioner Reports. It was another busy month, so I will start off and I'll try to go through it all kind of quickly. We met just before Thanksgiving. So after Thanksgiving, we had a Small Business Saturday event for the first time in downtown Upper Marlboro. I went early because I had a good on my mother-in-law's, but I heard, you know, everyone was excited about it. I heard after I left that it really, really picked up. And at, at least Bajon Divas, you know, let me know they did really well. Marlboro Grill was so hopping that I didn't add their, their business that day by adding an order. And I know OTI was just opening when I arrived, so. And then there was a Black-owned Small Business Expo down at the Equestrian Center, and that was super, super successful. A few of our local businesses were down there and they really thought that was a really valuable and successful time. We've been working with the food bank, the Marlboro Churches Food Bank, to do a lot of food donations. Their cupboard was bare, so we've been working with the other churches to fill their cupboard. We've also helped them with a coke drive. We, as Town Administrator Snyder said, we had a meeting with the state delegation that was really productive. We also had a follow-up meeting with Councilman Harrison's office and discussed how to get some of that stuff through with the county level. There's a lot of changes on the county level. I was honored to attend several events, the County Executive and County Council swearing in, the County Executive's inaugural gala, the swearing in of Sheriff Carr, an open house at Family Choice Healthcare, which is get-elect Kim Taylor's Community Healthcare Company. And a reception for the receipt of a Pepco grant. Director Bond and I went to that. We received five thousand dollars for emergency generators for the community, which will mean that if we have an emergency and that power is out, CIRK and Town Public Works and Town Staff is going to be able to make sure that any of our residents who are on medical equipment can't, don't have to go without that medical equipment running. And then just as far as like charging and that kind of thing, will be able to achieve those goals. All the events that I was at, I was able to make some really good connections with people and tell them about all the great things we're doing in Upper Marlboro. So I think that was really, really good for the town. We also partnered with CSA twenty-three on their toy drive for Mission of Love Charities. They had a really nice collection. I was out with the flu last week and we forgot to take the box in and it got filled again. So I called Mission of Love and they were like, sure, we can still get it to families. So I brought that over yesterday. So that was really great. I was also able to attend Rules Fitness, one of our local businesses. They had an open house. So that was neat to see those different organizations and you know, Marie made me line dance. And then we had, of course, our tree lighting and Christmas Town Market, which was a huge success. People are really loving this market on the cab mall thing, so hopefully we can keep that going. Um, I think that's it. It was a busy month, and I will turn it over to Commissioner Colbert.
Sure. So I was able to attend some of the same events, including the meeting with the state delegation at the end of last month, right after the Thanksgiving holiday. It seemed to be a fruitful conversation, hoping to continue, continue forward with them. Also attended the Christmas Town Market. I got there at the later end of it, but it still seemed to be a good crowd there. And, you know, I, I just have to say kudos to Commissioner Duckett, you, Commissioner Lot, all the volunteers, John, for being Santa. Put on a wonderful event and definitely a good time. I tried to get some hot chocolate in the line without the door on Bain Street Coffee and Treats. So that was, that, that definitely seemed to be a very popular type of event. Also attended the County Executive's inaugural gala and the PG-CMA Holiday Legislative gathering at the end of that week. So a number of different things trying to support and representing the town, but did a walkthrough with Chief previously on or earlier this week on one of the previous topics we discussed about the, the police office space. So we, you know, a number of different things over the last month, I'm probably forgetting one or two as well, but, yep.
Okay, Commissioner Duckett.
Oh, yes, thank you. I attended, of course, the Christmas event, which was a great success. And thank you to, again, all of the support for the volunteers that participated and town staff that were able to support as well. Oh, we thank our Santa that showed up and showed out, which the kids loved. So we are so thankful to John for that. All of the vendors, they had great feedback regarding the event. They said it was one of the most well-thought-out and considerate administratively events that they had attended as a, as a vendor. So, you know, I actually get that on camera, quite honestly. So I were to be able to say, this is actually what she said. So that, we had many vendors that were very excited. Also excited to attend future events that we have. So I have, of course, now I have quite a robust list of those individuals and, and that's building. So we're very happy about that. So whatever's coming up in the future, we definitely have quite a few of vendors that want to participate. So we're hoping this, this can be, well, it will be a yearly event. So this was our first real, even though it was a Christmas tree lighting, this was our first, I would say, actual market type event where we would have that, you know, Christmas market as well as Christmas tree lighting experience and with Santa. So well, in the form, fashion that it was held. So we expect to be able to do this again. And then also for this month, I attended like the M M L meet and greet, so which was very nice, a yearly annual event that occurs and just for all of us to get together, reconnect and touch base. So that was very nice to do as well. So that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanchet.
Good evening. I also attended the Also Brook Scholar. That was nice. I attended the Green Team, Green Team meeting on the eighth. That's getting, we're getting the ball rolling more with that. Like I said, we have the seed event coming up. I also attended the tree lighting. That was great. John was the great Santa and it was a great event, some good vendors. I also did the District Nine meet and greet. And I was actually paired up with Nick Charles, which it was nice to finally meet him. He's the House Chair of the County Delegation. And basically my month is almost the same as everyone else's, so that's the gist of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Commissioner Lot has joined us. Do you have a report?
Yes, good evening. I'd like to say thank you to everyone who helped make the Christmas Town event a success. Sorry, I'm late this evening. I'm actually on vacation with the kiddos and got lost and was afraid, afraid to, to get on the meeting without getting my bearings together. So I apologize for that. We had a wonderful time and just like to thank John, the Public Works Team Committee and my partner in crime, Commissioner Duckett, Commissioner Hatchett, Commissioner Colbert. You guys, thank you guys for showing up, for showing up and participating. Mayor was there to help us out too. We appreciate that. And we just had a wonderful time. The vendors really enjoyed themselves. They were very happy about the music and just, you know, the vibes that everybody, everybody felt like it was well organized and they shared that with us. And I actually had the mayor standing next to me when when one of the vendors went, came in, she told Commissioner Duckett and I, but then she said it again when the mayor was there. So that was the mayor got to hear it firsthand. So that was great. Like to share that I also attended the meet and greet at Showplace Arena. And I plan to attend the Governor's Ball that's coming up and basically, you know, everything was well put together. We had a good time and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
So we'll move right into our business. And we'll start with item A, ordinance twenty-twenty-two oh eight to amend twenty nineteen oh two town committees. John, are you able to read into the record?
I will be happy to. Ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero eight session regular town meeting introduced November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. An ordinance to amend ordinance twenty-nineteen dash zero two to authorize and provide for the appointment and governance of all committees and other bodies, not otherwise prescribed by the charter or other law to provide for certain practice, practices, procedures and governance of such bodies by prescribing and providing for the membership, creation and composition of certain bodies by providing for certain appointment procedures, compensation and budget, budgeting, terms of appointment and removal, conduct of meetings, appointed liability and indemnification, communications and generally relating to the practices, procedures and requirements for appointed bodies of the town of Upper Marlboro.
Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's have Kyle kind of, Town Administrator Snyder, give us an overview.
Absolutely, Mayor. So this has been on the agenda for the past couple of months.
We lost you, Kyle.
Accidentally hit my spacebar. We, the board's been talking about this past couple of months. Updates to the town committees ordinance, the umbrella ordinance that oversees all the town committees and making some changes that came out with the discussion of historical committee. And just some minor updates to it. We've gone into detail on them before. Let me know if you want to talk about any of the individual points that are being amended.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I do. I'm sorry, this is totally off the subject, but I totally forgot in my haste to recognize the volunteers. I know this is off topic, but I just want to make sure I get that in there. The volunteers, Ms. Barbara, Patty and Linda, thank you so much for helping us make the event what it was very special. Thank you, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments about ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash oh eight? Okay, and I think our, our attendee resident is not able to speak. But go ahead and raise your hand at any point, Linda, if that changes and we'll keep an eye out for your hand throughout the meeting. Given there are no questions or comments, I'm going to ask if there is a vote, a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash oh eight amend twenty-nineteen oh two town committees.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Sorry, aye.
Commissioner Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to item B, ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash oh nine Comcast cable franchise agreement. John, can you read that in for us?
Will do. Hang on one second. Move this around. All right, and ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero nine session regular town meeting introduced November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. An ordinance to the Board of Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro granting a renewal of the cable franchise to Comcast of Maryland LLC and authorizing a franchise agreement and generally relating to cable television.
All right, I know Kyle, you kind of gave us an overview before, but I think we were missing Commissioner Lot. If you want to just do another quick one.
Absolutely. So this is a renewal of the Comcast franchise that expired with the town. I think this is the second time that the town renewed this franchise. This time is a bit different in that it's a joint venture between Prince George County and all the municipalities together, so that we're not doing individual negotiations. And there's the strength in numbers. This agreement is not is the same as previous, so that's always a win. We didn't lose anything. And once it's passed and ratified by all the municipalities and the county, which is the deadline we were set, they wanted this approved by January, which is why we had to hurry up and get it introduced in November and the vote here in December. So we're ahead of the curve. We'll go ahead and be able to get that Comcast cable access channel along with our Verizon cable access channel. After it's passed and I can take any questions anyone may have.
Hearing no questions or comments. Sorry. I can't stop that timer. I can't stop that timer. Should be done in, okay. Um, hearing no questions or comments, is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty two dash oh nine Comcast cable franchise agreement?
All right, President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Yep. We will move on to item C resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty police license plate reader. John, can you read that?
Yes, will do. Resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty session regular town meeting dated December twentieth twenty twenty two. A resolution of the town Board of Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro to approve the acceptance of a fiscal year twenty three local agency license plate reader grant from the Maryland State Police and authorize the purchase of cameras and license from a vendor.
Um, Chief, do you want to just give the quick overview? I know we've all heard it, but.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. It has some technical issues. Uh, the pretty much is license place readers, the latest technology, being able to assist uh department with identifying stolen vehicles, lost vehicles, carjack vehicles or individuals who are lost, you know, due to um not knowing where they are. The silver alerts and all those type of things. Um, it's just upgrading the police department and bringing us into the twenty first century with the technology and moving us forward. That's it.
And we have a grant, so.
Yes, the grant is paying for this one hundred percent.
All right, are there any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty police license plate reader?
Second.
President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Um, thank you. And we'll move on to item D, police department employment agreements.
Well, do you want to check it? I mean, uh.
Commissioner Lot, can you mute? Thank you. Um. So I'm going to ask, I guess, Chief and Administrator Snyder to tag team this as needed. Um, and we'll let Chief start off.
Basically, what this is, um, that has gone through the attorney, uh, Kevin Best, who made these changes uh from when I last discussed it, it's in either a two-year or three-year term for an agreement for an officer to get hired. So basically what happens is when we hire officers, um, we can spend upwards of forty five hundred dollars and getting them into the process and getting them started. Well, an officer could three months down the line, six months down the line, a year just up and leave, and there's nothing that we can do about that. But what these agreements do is allow us to be able to state that, hey, if you leave within either the two-year agreement or the three-year agreement, there are certain monies that you would have to pay us back or forfeit. Um, because you signed this agreement. And what happens is in today's climate, we have a lot of officers that jump around from different agency to agency. And basically, once you buy the equipment and, you know, particular like a vest, uniforms, that same stuff does not fit the next officer. So it could cost a lot of money over the course of, you know, several years buying stuff and having to switch it out when somebody leaves without, you know, getting the full benefit of the officer being in the town and doing the citizens that good service. So uh, like I said, Attorney Best has looked at these agreements and he's made these changes so that um you all could approve it if, if, you know, you show desire. That's all I have.
And just to a build off of Chief, I'm going to turn, talking with Attorney Best right now, the town, the way the town legislation is written is employment contracts have to go before the board. Um, so one thing, if the board doesn't want to be approving individual police officer employment contracts as they come in, just for like entry level officers, what they could do is delegate it, for instance, the budget ordinance that the chief's allowed to uh authorize as many. The chief and the mayor are allowed to authorize as many employment agreements as there are budgeted officers. So he's not, he can't add employment agreements outside of the uh, the police force that he's authorized to do. And that, that'll be able to cut back on the amount of time the board spends looking at um some of these things. Um, or the board could look at changing legislation, but that just seems easier route path of least resistance. So we can talk about that when we hit the uh budget ordinance for FY twenty four, if the board want to tell um add that line in there. That's all I have.
I just want to clarify, we'll need to add that to the ordinance because we have one authorized position that's not filled that we had there for speaking and our money, but we'll have to approve the contract individually this year. Yes, okay. All right, um, comments, questions, thoughts, concerns? Okay, hearing none, do, I'm going to ask if there is a vote to approve the police department employment increments as they are um to be executed as we hire officers um until the next fiscal year. Oh. So you're good, you're good. I was just rambling. Is there a second?
Second.
President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We'll move on to item number E, which is FY twenty twenty audit approval. Um. The audit is included there. Everyone had got it emailed at some point last month or early this month, I think. Um, and all we're looking to do is approve it. Are there questions, comments, concerns ahead of that? Administrator Snyder, have anything to say about it?
Uh, no, it's just uh normally the board just votes to accept it, give the rubber stamp, but um audit wise, we passed no red flags or anything like that. Came out strong.
Everything looked pretty much the same as the previous years.
I caught them copying and pasting. So it kind of city in there in the first draft.
I thought I was like rereading some stuff and I was like, yeah, it's formed. All right, um, hearing no comments, questions, concerns, is there a motion to approve the FY twenty two twenty two?
Yes, so.
Is there a second?
Second.
President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
And just so everyone's aware, I am watching for that hand to go up in our attendees section. So I'm not just trying to plow through um public comment. It's not, we only have the one attendee and there's no hand being raised. Um, we're going to move on to administrative updates. We have a bit of an issue that we um discovered yesterday, and so we have to do an emergency vote. So uh, I'm going to hand it over uh Director Bond to Administrator Snyder, um, since I know your voice is not up to it. So.
Um, sure, yes, I'll step in for Director Bond. So uh Foreman Shekels has been instrumental in that. So uh, everyone came into town hall on Monday and it was freezing cold in the new wing. Um, come to find out that the motor unit in the HVAC system that was installed about five or six years ago um has gone bad. So Chapman Air came out yesterday um and was able to replace some belts and get it kind of working, but it keeps cutting in and out. Um, so there's the need for a new um motor system in there. It's outside of its warranty, unfortunately. Um. The motor itself, it only has a one-year warranty apparently. Um, but uh, so we have some extra space heaters in place. We just need board approval to move forward because we're in this weird time where the, who are waiting for the new um procurement legislation to kick in place within the forty days. So this is hopefully the last um approval under X amount of dollars the board has to make for housekeeping items. Um, and I know Director Bond's making some plans. In the meantime, in case this heater does not get installed um before Christmas holiday, we're supposed to see a, a cold front move through over the weekend. Um, but thankfully, the new section does not have any water pipes in it. It's on the old section and the old section has a separate HVAC unit um that is functioning. So um, that's good. We don't have to worry about any burst pipes, but we do have space heaters in place.
And Director Bond, you can speak. I just know that your voice is bad, so I didn't want to force you to give us the overview.
I appreciate that. And uh Kyle pretty much get everything on the head. Uh, only thing that uh for my, we would actually have to check on uh if this is, if we do get the, the polar front that we're looking at, is maybe the kitchen sink and uh check all the space heaters themselves, just to make sure everything is up and operational. Um. I do believe we've had a few issues uh in the past with this system, just on the interface portion of it. Uh, as far as the, the, the fans in the, in, in the roof line and things of that nature. What I believe it is at this point is the blower motor that actually blows the heat inside, if I'm hearing correctly, uh especially being off site. Um, this is not, it, it seems to me a little premature of to have that failure uh this early. However, it's not necessarily out out of the ordinary, especially when you're dealing with a completely outdoor uh house unit. Um, it pretty much sees all weather and everything else. I'll uh stand by for any questions.
Does anyone have any questions, um, comments, concerns, other than we want staff to be warm?
Well, my comment was, I just thought it was a little odd too, since the building is newly built, that it would have gone out that quickly, but um I'm sure we've had it serviced or uh maintenance as properly, you know, as it needs to be, but that, yeah, that's just kind of amazing. I'm like, what kind of unit is that? Is it a train? Is, I mean, because amazing to me, but uh.
Commissioner, this is actually by a very reputable uh manufacturer, uh carrier, which they do a lot of the uh high-end and uh in large-scale uh units, which, which is why I'm sort of flabbergasted of the wide field, so.
Yeah.
Tuning in for this one.
Right. Well, thank you for um, yeah, giving me that, I mean, sharing that with me. I definitely, of course, would have seen staff nice and warm, but I was wondering if this doesn't happen in time, you know, will the staff be working from home? Will we be considering closing uh town hall for a little bit while, you know, while this gets taken care of?
The staff has been keeping themselves pretty warm with the space heaters. Um, they can go into our office and the, the offices next to that in the conference room. Um, so they've been okay. No one's told me they're frozen out um yet. And um, we actually are, we got two more days, um, and then they're supposed to come fix it on Tuesday. Um, so it's really just making sure, um, you know, that that kitchen sink water is off and the, you know, all that kind of checking on the space heaters. And I'm sure that Foreman Chuckles will walk me through everything that needs to be done over the weekend. Over the next day or two, so.
We actually had to turn off some of the space heaters. It got too warm.
Oh.
And uh, if it hasn't been checked every six months, I think Director Bond can correct me, but we have had them out usually about every six months to check on it and service.
Uh, let me ask you, since you just mentioned, since we're talking about that, is there opportunity to purchase like a, an additional warranty on that thing? You know, on the unit, excuse me, if, if, you know, I don't know if it would be, you know, worthwhile. I mean, I mean, it may be. I just don't know how much it costs from the original.
Usually it's an additional two years and we're talking six years here. So that would be the first year manufacturer, then two year. That's not common to get a warranty that goes further than that. So.
So that's why I'm asking.
That's true.
Opportunity to.
I was just, but we can get, what about a PM uh maintenance agreement, a preventive maintenance agreement? Where they can come out and service it. And um, they can come out and service it maybe quarterly and um you know, uh, we can get an agreement for that.
Yes, that was going to be my next recommendation. We don't necessarily have a uh a service agreement with um Chapman Services, however, as a courtesy, uh we do call them out for uh, for um intermittent checks uh just when things don't seem right and things of that nature. So they do, when they do come out, they do do a full uh uh diagnostic and a run through with everything. So um, I definitely think we are at the point with this system that we will be entertaining some sort of uh uh preventive maintenance uh service agreement. I just have to find out what that looks like from Chapman and maybe shop that around a bit.
I agree.
That's definitely.
Uh, I'm just saying that I think they should be coming out twice a year, like that's what they do for our household. They come in the spring and then they come in the fall. And it's, if any issues do come up, it falls on them and not the homeowner or, you know, town hall.
This is, this is a little different, though. This is a commercial, it's a commercial building, so they should be coming out quarterly to actually check to make sure that if they're, they need to change the coils, all that stuff is involved in the maintenance agreement, so that they will be changing them and we wouldn't be paying extra money like for emergency services. So.
So what I'm hearing is that um, as Director Bond is wanting to do, we're going to um look at a company to do a longer-term service agreement. Um, and he'll bring that to us probably in January or February, but in the meantime, if we can approve the um expense now so that we can get it taken care of. Um, and I'm, I'm putting on my agenda for January, um the service agreement. If it can't be done that quickly, then we'll move it over to February. Is that good? Everyone?
Yes, yes.
That works for me. And just to let you guys know, uh, Chapman was out uh earlier this summer and they gave the system a, a complete check over. So just trying to figure out why this particular element failed is the sort of the main cause right now, but we will figure that out and see if there's any sort of extended warranty. We can get on this part from the manufacturer and then go from there.
We'll keep figuring out the, the prob, what, what caused the problem, but we're also going to solve it. So um, I'm going to call for um a motion to approve the um invoice from Chapman Services so that they can come and repair the heating.
Yes, so moved.
Your second?
My second.
President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, all right. We're in the public comment section um of this meeting. I do not see a raised hand. Um, so we are going to move on to preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda. Again, Linda, you're welcome to raise your hand and we'll give you three minutes. All right, so for January, um, we have our upcoming meeting and it's going to be a work session. Uh, and what we had kind of decided to do and at the last work session was to have an old business section and a new business section so that we're not losing track of any of our items. So under old business, we're going to have Better City. Um, we're going to have the Sustainable Community Working Group. The Vision Plan, um Police Department Space. Um, and.
You slow down a little bit. I'm so sorry. And, and just back up. I'm trying to write it down as you're saying it. If you don't mind.
Better City. Sustainable Community Working Group. Vision Plan. Police Department Space. Um, and ethics is something that was on our old business that kind of got dropped off. So those will be old business, again with old business. If we don't have new stuff to talk about, we can just move on with it, but at least it's there and it's staying on our radar. Um, for new business, we need to start tackling our elections, ordinance and. Um, for new business, we need to start tackling our elections, ordinance and legislative package. Um, we'll do an events recap for the year, lessons learned, et cetera, and the calendar for next year. Um, we'll have a presentation on the budget, uh, season calendar. Um, there are a few minor changes to the conference room agreement that, um. I'd like to see if we can just get those made and out of the way. Uh, and then there's the service agreement for the HVAC. Are there any other things that we need to add to that that I'm missing?
Um, two things that are, that are kind of older business. Uh, one of them. Uh, I know, I know it's in the administrative report, you know, a line in there, but could we get a little bit of an update on where we are with annexation efforts? Whether that from Levann and Ralph or Kyle gets more a detailed, uh, status of where we are, just so we can have. Start the year with, you know, a reference point on where we are with that. And then the second point, I've gotten a couple of questions on, uh. The status of moving to hybrid meetings. Have we made any headway with that at all?
We did talk about that. We were hoping to do that today. We're hoping to test it out today, but both John and I are sick. Uh, and we both need to be there. Um, but also I, I'm wondering if we have, like, how many commissioners are going to be in person?
I would make, uh, this is Commissioner Lot. I would make myself available, uh, for some of the meetings, not all.
Same.
Yes, likewise.
Uh, same, but mostly town.
That we should do is, sorry. But, but I'm sorry. Actually, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So, yeah, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be only town meetings that are going to be blended, but.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask if we could kind of stagger, like, you know, do a schedule where one of the commissioners. Is there besides the mayor and if we can get two, yay, 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 but at least one should be on site.
I mean, I think it would be best if we can all kind of make the effort to be there, um. If we're gonna be in person.
Or at least three. Or, I mean, all would be better.
I'm fine with that. Either way, I'm fine.
So we're saying work session would be remote?
Work session will remain remote. However. Um, I will attempt to do, provided John and I both are healthy. I will attempt to, to be in town hall. Uh, it won't be like open for January, but it'll be my location will be in that room so that we can test it. Uh, and make sure that everything is working. Um.
Same here.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, so I was, I was saying that I'm willing, but definitely, um. With my schedule, it will be sporadic, um, at times for me coming in to, to a six o'clock meeting. I mean, to a seven o'clock meeting, but, um, as everyone else has mentioned, I can, I will definitely make an effort.
Okay, um, so, yeah, a- again. Holds, no need to call everyone in and cough on them. Um, so, well, hopefully we'll be ready in January.
I would also like to, uh, um, say that. I would also like to, um. Add to that, yeah, I would definitely like to know where we are with the annexation for twenty twenty-three and.
So I can ask Kyle to just, I mean.
You know, with their, uh, feedback as far as to be their feedback about our branding. I think that's.
So the branding, um, that's part of the Better City Old Business. They have a branding, um. Amendment to the contract for us, so that will be. That's what the, one of the things we're going to be talking about in the January meeting. Um. Kyle.
Okay, great.
Just since everyone's asking kind of like read your update or sort of informally give the annexation update.
Absolutely, Mayor. Um, so what we're waiting for, we're updating consent forms, um. And working with the property owners who sign consent in phase two for the last round, um, and sending out notices to them. To either sign these updated consent forms, um, or if we don't hear anything back from them, either way, we'll accept their old consent forms in the new. Annexation legislation. Um, also just going through and pulling all the old data or pulling all the new data. So we reran, we went through and reran all of the properties, um, from phase two, just to get the updated owner and assessment information. Um, and we'll also be working, um, after the new year to pull all the updated voter registration information again. So that we can double check we have everything and get the, uh, the letters and the consent totals, um, up to par. So hopefully in early January, we'll have a plan of action for the commissioners to, uh, start some door knocking. Um, and get that legislation introduced late winter, um, early spring. So we have a good idea of where we're heading for the FY twenty-four budget.
And I will be, you know, knocking doors, but I would definitely appreciate some assistance. There's a couple of people that I think. Specific commissioners will have, um, better rapport with, um, so. We're gonna hopefully get that strategized, um, and we will be checking that voter registration list. Probably monthly or at least every other month until that annexation is complete. So. Um. All right. So thank you for joining us. It is the holidays officially, so everyone should have a happy holiday and Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. Um, and. Yep, I, I might, I've got an alarm apparently. Um, so, yes, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? I second. I, I think that was Janice and Charles and, all right, go ahead, um.
President Franklin.
I.
Commissioner Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
I.
Commissioner Hansett.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot.
I.
Motion carries.
All right.
Happy holidays.
Everyone have a good holiday.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you all.
Merry Christmas.
Take care.
Bye-bye.